I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council Regular Meeting of November 25, 2019. It is 5:30 PM. We have some public comments on the closed-session items. So, I will call your names in the order of received them. Andy Stern. Bruce Silverstein. Paul Grisanti. And Ryan Embry. And do we have any other speaker slips? Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Fair, councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me the privilege to speak before you this evening. First off, I want to congratulate the city attorney and city manager on the breathtaking settlement with Edison. That is beyond my imagination how well you guys did with that negotiation. It's an amazing accomplishment, and I hope the good folks of Malibu really realize that. I'm also here to say, and I wrote all of you an email, sadly, there's a small band of people that come before these meetings. I've watched them, and they complain when I used to have the privilege of sitting up there like y'all do. I used to think if I said white, they'd say black. If I said black, they would say white. There is a large majority of people in this town, I'm certain, that really appreciate what you do and are very grateful for your efforts for what you do. And to the city of manager, thank you. You have done an outstanding job. I heard Yolanda speak the other day, new employee. I was blown away, not just in her qualifications, but in her passion to help people rebuild this town. It was very clear she's going to do a great job. And why does she come to Malibu? It's, as my mother would say, a schlep. You know, to get people to come here ain't easy unless you live here. So, why do they come? I think it's the environment. It's you guys, it's the city manager, it's the attraction of working with great people. So, I just wanted to compliment the city manager. I wanted to compliment you guys. And, you know, if people are happy, they're not going to come down and say how much they like you. But I like you. I appreciate every one of you. Thank you for the service to our community, and have a happy holiday.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Maza.
Good evening. A little over a year ago, I was standing in the bottom of a gully with a garden hose trying to fight a giant fire. And I was hoping that somebody come and help me, since there were six fire trucks about 300 feet away. And they didn't. So, I wanted to speak about what's happened in the last year and how we should do that. I think your main job, your main job, since you're not here every day running everything, is to establish trust in the city government with the public. And basically, on the west side of Malibu, you don't have that. And part of the reason for that is there were errors made coming into the fire. We had a report come out, 53 things that should have been done. Maybe 20 of them should have been done, really done. But that was a government report. Then we had another government report that said, oh gee, everything was fine. It was just too big of a fire. Then we had a report come out and say, gee, there was a stand-down order, and we weren't going to protect your houses. But we didn't get that for a year. Okay? That does not establish trust with the public to hide a pertinent fact like that for a year. It does not. And we are sitting in a situation now, I passed out just one page of a real estate agent in town of just burnouts for sale. We have a third of our houses being rebuilt. The rest probably going to be sold. Who knows? But page after page in the local real estate, you know, it's burnouts for sale. Those people are gone. We've lost 10% to 20% of our town. So, I'm not asking you to do a Stanley Kubrick "paths of glory," go out and shoot somebody. But you need to establish trust in people. You need to have repercussions for not doing things. You need to have a reason to reward somebody. And if you can't come up with a reason to reward somebody, you should not. That is the main point, is did the government make a mistake, make a mistake? Were we blockaded when we shouldn't be? Were houses burning down two days later because they couldn't get in to put out their own houses? And what happened after that? It's a year. We don't have an evacuation plan. A lot of stuff has been done. But you have to evaluate, why we had the fire, what happened in the fire, and what happened since? And you don't reward failure. And part of this is failure because you have not reestablished trust with the people. And, you know, it's just like in Washington. Oh, and there's an election next year. Well, that doesn't cut it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bruce Silverstein, followed by Paul Grisanti, followed by Ryan Embry.
Good evening, everybody. So, I don't have a basis to comment substantively on the performance of the city manager, and that's exactly what I want to comment about, which is that there's a lack of transparency. The city council members, you all stand for election. You've got to explain your credentials, and you stand for public scrutiny. You're elected. The city manager is selected. As now, I've never lived in a contract city before. I've always lived in cities where the elected officials ran the show. I don't understand whether that does happen here or doesn't happen here, but it seems to me that's not the way this works. You're all underpaid. You devote what time you can, but the city's run by the city manager. But the city manager doesn't stand to public scrutiny in terms of anything other than to hear it. You all are the buffer, and that's not appropriate. Now, the Brown Act permits you to conduct this performance evaluation and other discussions about the city manager behind closed doors, but the Brown Act does not require that. In fact, the city attorney for the city of San Francisco was asked this question, and it's a published analysis, that the elected authority has, the elected body has the authority, but is not required to conduct performance evaluations in closed session. But deciding whether to do so or not is a matter of public policy. You all decide public policy. To my knowledge, you've never made a decision whether these evaluations are to be conducted in public or not. You're just doing it that way because that's the way it's been done. The city manager actually decides when it gets done, how it gets done. So, that's not appropriate, as I see it. I sent you all a letter on February 19 of 2019 when you were going to do this evaluation initially, and I raised these points, so I'm just raising it again. The notice of special meetings, as I understand it, it says that the mayor has called the meeting. I know from former mayor Jeff Wagner that the mayor does not, did not, at least in history, call the meeting. It was called by somebody below, probably the clerk or the city manager. I don't know whether the mayor actually did call the meeting this time. Lastly, it says labor negotiator, but it doesn't say who that is on the agenda. I'm assuming, since it also says city representative, city attorney Kristi Hogan, that must be who the labor negotiator is, but maybe I'm incorrect. But in any event, the negotiations, to the extent there are any, should not be conducted by somebody whose work amount and payments are directly or indirectly tied to decisions being made by the person who's being evaluated. That's a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Grisanti, followed by Ryan Embry, followed by the tough one. I'll attempt it after Paul.
Twelve months ago, the population of Malibu, the repopulation of Malibu was just beginning. Anger, confusion, pain, and uncertainty about the future were the primary emotions tearing apart our lives and the community. The county of Los Angeles and the city of Malibu were just as gobsmacked as the residents. Finger pointing, commiserating, and rumors were the currency of the day. The fire was larger than anyone state, county, or city had contemplated, occupying three of the four wildfire corridors through the Malibu Mountains. The response during the disaster had been a disaster. It could only get better. The city in Malibu soon began a series of meetings about what had happened and how to begin the recovery. I'm grateful that the city went into the fire in good enough financial shape that, thanks to you guys on the council and Riva, that we were able to spend over $13 million on the emergency response, infrastructure replacement, and lots and lots of mud removal without additional debt. I'm grateful that Supervisor Sheila Kuhl embraced the disaster and was able to influence the various county agencies to send their top decision-makers to the listening meetings. I'm grateful that Supervisor Kuhl embraced the problems we were going to have meeting the fire flow requirements in most areas served by District 29, and was able to make solving that problem a priority for Fire Chief Osby in District 29. I'm grateful that Sheila Kuhl's office and Riva Feldman were able to stay committed to the fire flow solution and spend time on the phone several times a week, every week, for four months until those solutions were negotiated. I'm grateful that Riva and the city council made rebuilding Malibu their priority in every meeting during the last year. Political divisions were set aside to find obstructions and remove them. You changed codes, ordinances, and the local coastal plan to speed the process. Additional staff were hired to assist with the necessary plan research and processing for rebuilds. I'm grateful that Riva and the council ran the numbers and restructured the budget, canceling or delaying pet projects. This allowed the city to free up the funds to motivate residents to rebuild by paying for owner-occupied fire rebuild permits. The amount of fees waived in the past 12 months is approaching $1 million. I'm grateful that an ill-advised change in the total development square footage ordinance was rejected by the council, who decided to focus on rebuilding Malibu in response to an outpouring of opposition from residents. I'm grateful that Riva and the council have changed the climate for employees in the planning and building departments by applauding the speedy processing of applications and setting a goal of an application to permit, an application to permit in six months or less. As the recovery has progressed...
Thank you.
...you've identified a timing problem with California Code Check and addressed its bringing a Code Check employee into house. I've got six more sentences. I'm grateful that a brilliant hiring decision in adding Yolanda Bundy, that was a great hire. You all deserve a lot of credit for that. I'm grateful for each of the 42 permits that have been granted and the 196 applications received so far. And most recently, I'm grateful that our city attorney Kristi Hogan brought us the good news of a $13.7 million settlement with Southern California Edison to repair our depleted reserve account. I hope the next 12 months brings even more progress towards a more resilient Malibu.
Thank you. Ryan Embry, followed by Ialusham Foster.
Thank you. I know you're going to have cheerleaders here, and I want to stick to discussing the last six to 12 months of the issues that faced the city. I've been coming to the city council since the city incorporated, and in my extra 10 years prior to incorporation, I think I've got a good feel for the town. Those who are regularly involved in city government come here, and we spend our evenings, and we give our suggestions for improvement and betterment. If the staff or the council consider that criticism and put us on the wrong list and don't give us an extra 30 seconds at the mic, well, we notice that, too. I've seen high-level city managers perform in this city and other cities, and I know it when I see it. So, if somehow you find the innumerable problems over the last six to 13 months that have faced this city, especially in response to the fire and prior to the fire, when we identified communications system failure, sewer and water pump system failure, and traffic signal failure as a likely result of the power interruption proposed by Southern California Edison, we knew that it was going to affect Malibu in the worst ways, and we were not prepared. We wrote a letter to the PUC. What resulted was that terrible evacuation that risked a lot of Malibu lives on the highway. And it has been a year, and we're still learning how to do it differently or better. The media got in during the fire, but the residents couldn't get in unless you knew somebody. And that also was wrong, and I think that went all the way to the top. So, we have a lot to learn. We have those 50-some-odd issues that were brought up in the report. You found the city manager's performance is satisfactory. That's great. I find that creative. But the level of compensation is a totally separate matter. The Transparent California listed the compensation for the city manager in prior years, the most recent years we're reporting, were over $330,000. That is generous and adequate for this city. We don't have a power department, or a water district, or our own fire department, or police department. We deal with the coastal commission. But that is what you're discussing tonight, the amount of compensation, and I think you should hold tight. It is appropriate, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ialusham Foster.
Good evening. My name is Ialusham Gatacho, Ialusham Fosca Gatacho. I have been a resident of Malibu for 20 years, which blew my mind when I was thinking about it tonight. And in this time, I have never spoken to the city council, and I have never been a strong participant. I come out of a city background. I used to work in city politics and city council in downtown Los Angeles. And therefore, I have angst, and I have some level of understanding of what it's like to be a city staffer. And it is for that reason I decided to come this evening. I have watched with anguish and shock, and I've been appalled by the level of discourse in this whole conversation. And I don't know Ms. Feldman myself. However, watching post-fire, I don't understand why she's being blamed and blamed alone. I don't understand what has not been done. As a matter of fact, I've been very impressed by the staff, the way that you guys have all responded in terms of the number of staff people you've hired thereafter, the way you've responded to us. The situation was an unbearable situation, was a difficult situation for everyone, and continues to be. I find it really discouraging that what I perceive to be an extreme perspective has been getting a lot of attention. And so, I wanted to come here tonight to implore you to make a fair decision, to do a fair evaluation. I think compensation is something that, I'm sure you have compensation consultants who do market analysis for you. That was probably, I've seen it, and I think that it's within the middle range of what other cities pay. I feel it's fair. I feel that the staff has been extremely responsive, and I don't think the level of discourse benefits and is in keeping with who we are as Malibu. And so, I wanted to come here and say that. So, I ask you to make a fair and a good decision, and I ask you to do an evaluation you would as any staff person. And I'm sorry that she has been subjected to that level of ranker. I don't know how you attract quality people, or how you attract the level of staff that we deserve, if you continue to attack people in that manner. And I felt that it was important to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public speakers.
Madam Mayor, can I just say one quick thing, if you don't mind? I just, I didn't want Mr. Silverstein's comment to go unanswered, just for the record, about his concern about a conflict of interest. So, just let me just say two things about that. First is that the city manager's office is not a source of the flow of work to my office. But more importantly, this city has a flat-rate contract with my firm for General City Attorney Services. So, even if she did give us a lot of work, or she withheld it and gave us very little, the rate of pay wouldn't change. It's a flat rate, as you know. So, I understand the concern is a valid question to raise, but I just wanted to assure him that that was not in play, and obviously, we're mindful of it. And at this time, the council is prepared to recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 and 54957.6 to discuss the two items that are listed on the posted agenda.
Thank you. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Malibu City Council Regular Meeting of November 25, 2019. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mullin.
Here.
Councilmember Peak.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Fair.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Dane Scopehammer, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and which is republic, or which is sin, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, and all.
May we have a closed-session report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's regular meeting actually convened at 5:30, at which time, after hearing public comments, the council recessed to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 and 54957.6. The council discussed both the items that are listed on the posted agenda and did not take any reportable actions tonight. I would just add as a footnote that with respect to the real property negotiation, any final action will be an open session agenda as an amendment to the lease. And with respect to the labor negotiation and the city manager, any final action will come as an action on the contract at an open session, a regular meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda, please?
I'd like to move to approve the agenda, but I'd like to request, Mayor Fair, if we could move Item 7A to just after the consent items and prior to 4A.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And, Kelsey, may I please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 15, 2019, with the amended agenda and second amended agenda posted on November 20, 2019.
And next, we have a recognition of Suzanne Good upon her retirement from the California Department of Parks and Recreation, Angeles District. Suzanne, would you like to join me at the podium?
Suzanne Good began her career with the California Department of Parks and Recreation in 1989 as an intern, and served most recently as the Natural Resource Program Manager of the Angeles District, overseeing the natural resources for 40,000 acres in the Santa Monica Mountains, Seamy Hills, the San Fernando Valley, the Verdugo Mountains, and downtown Los Angeles. She has been involved with several large habitat restoration projects in the Santa Monica Mountains, including the Malibu Lagoon, the removal of Rinj Dam in Malibu Canyon, Lower Topanga Creek, Arroyo Secuit, and La Jolla Valley. Suzanne is particularly focused on the restoration of native grasslands. She also has responsibility for internal and external environmental review and real property management. Along with this, Suzanne serves as a member of several biological and environmental advisory committees, including the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission, Los Angeles County, and Malibu Environmental Review Boards, and the Montrose Trustee Council. Suzanne earned a Bachelor of Science degree and Master of Science degree in Biology from California State University, Los Angeles, in addition to a Bachelor of Arts degree in English from Butler University. On behalf of the Malibu community, we want to thank you for your many years of service.
I'm very, very grateful for this recognition. I've been working here in the Santa Monica Mountains for California State Parks since before cityhood. California State Parks, of course, is a very large landowner within, public landowner within and adjacent to the city of Malibu, and our lands form the beautiful scenic backdrop that helps to make this city such a beautiful place. So, we've been very proud to work with the city on so many projects. And I have to say that, I have to quote one of your former city managers, who said that if they have a cow patty tossing contest in Malibu, it makes the national news. And that's very, very true, because anything that happens in Malibu gets a lot of attention just because of its cachet. But I've learned to know the city as a real place where real people work and try to solve the problems of everyday living, and I recognize the many dedicated civil servants and residents of the community that have worked so hard to protect this wonderful environment. So, I've really, really enjoyed working with the city on such projects, and I thank you very much for recognizing me. Thank you.
Suzanne? Suzanne? We will have a staff update on disaster response and recovery.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. There it is. There it is. All right. So, in the last few weeks, we have consolidated the draft evacuation plan. As I mentioned last time, there were three different parts that were being developed by different agencies. So, there was the evacuation strategies portion, traffic management, and communication sections. And so, we've now consolidated all these, but they still need some work. And the next step starts to reach out to our neighboring jurisdictions. Some of the receiving agencies, as you might say, if we evacuate, want to take a look at the plan and see if there's any logistical things that we need to incorporate, or they need to put into their plans in order to accommodate our residents if we did have to evacuate to the other side of the hill or in Santa Monica. So, that's, we're going to try and get that done in December. And then, in January, we'll get back together with our agency partners to go back through the plan again and try and get that finalized. And then, hopefully, I expect that we will bring it back to city council in February for you to approve. We also recently participated in a kickoff meeting for the development of a community wildfire protection plan. We also participated in a monthly meeting of the Malibu CERT team, which, just as you know, they're very busy working on improving communications in the city. And one of the members recently did a frequency check, because we have this new repeater that you approved for us to have on Saddle, I'm sorry, Castro Peak. But before you can make that live, you have to make sure that our frequency isn't interfering with other people. So, we got that done, and the team can take credit for that. Our fire safety liaison, Jerry, has conducted 20 more home ignition zone assessments, so now we're a total of 121. We also attended a training for the wireless emergency alert. That's the WIA system, which is like the Amber Alert type of a system, where nobody needs to be signed up for it. It just goes through cell towers to alert everybody that's in the area. They're going to be requiring monthly tests of this system. I don't believe these are live tests, but we are working on getting prepared to comply with that requirement. We also recently developed policies and procedures for issuing emergency alerts in Spanish. While most of our residents are English speakers, you have to be able to issue alerts in the second-most-popular standby, especially for the holiday, having some teams that are ready to go if something should happen. And then, of course, Public Works and public safety staff will be monitoring the storm the entire time. And of course, as we always say, sign up for disaster notifications and alerts, malibu city.org/news or malibu city.org/disasternotifications. City hotline, 310-456-9982, or one call to City Hall, 310-456-CITY, extension 311. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan.
And just to give you a brief update on where we are with the progress on approving and reviewing single-family homes and accessory structures. We currently have 10 applications we're working on. That number will change probably tomorrow. One, maybe two to sign that are ready for a final approval. But to date, we've approved 187 single-family residences out of the 473 that we're looking to reissue permits for. Forty-three building permits have been issued, most recently this afternoon, another one was issued. And we are nearing completion on homes. We'll show you one home towards the end of the presentation, but to date, none have had their final inspection. Looking at the numbers for the planning department in a bit more detail, as I mentioned, there's 187 single-family residences we've issued approvals on. Twenty-seven approvals have been issued for second units and 100 accessory structures. And those, once again, could be barns, garages, sheds, or studios. Through the implementation of the fee waiver program, this is both fees waived and refunds as directed by the city council, we've issued about $1.2 million worth of fees that have been waived to date.
Good evening. For the building and safety, we have, again, 43 permits approved and under construction. We are also meeting with a lot of families. There's 51 that are in plan check, so we're calling those so we can meet with them and hopefully move them towards the approval area. We have a video for you of the first home that was approved in Pasel Canyon, and it's very close to completion. So, we are working closely with the contractor and inspection staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker slips? Okay, I'll call them in threes, if you could please come close to the front to save time. First speaker is Burt Ross, followed by Dana Clark, followed by Lynn Norton.
Well done, Building Department. We got our permit, we were number 31, and we're very, very grateful. Mayor Farrar and members of the council, my name is Burt Ross, and I'm here to show my support for Riva Feldman, our city manager, who has been relentlessly attacked by a small group of people who seem to have nothing else going on in their lives. It is one thing to question and to evaluate the efficacy of a manager's performance. This is our right as informed citizens. It is quite another to smear someone's reputation, to engage in baseless character assassination. That conduct is reprehensible and should be beneath all of us. Since my wife and I moved here almost eight years ago, there have been nine people who have served on this city council. They are the ones who have worked with Riva on a daily basis and are in the best position to evaluate her performance. All but one of these council members have given Riva their support. My wife and I have always found Riva professional and supportive of our community. When we helped found the Malibu Task Force on Homelessness, we went to Riva, and she and later on, our public safety manager, Susan Duenis, devoted their time and energy to help make the pilot program a success. Thanks to their support and, of course, that of the city council, the city now engages the people concerned directly, helping our most disadvantaged residents access housing and critically needed services. When we returned to Malibu after losing our home in the Woolsey Fire, we were greeted by hugs from Riva, Susan, and a host of other people who helped make this city what it is. Thanks to all of you, the city has waived permitting fees, which has saved us a small fortune, added staff to expedite things significantly, the entire permit application process for fire rebuilds has become quicker, and sponsored countless workshops and other events to help our city heal. Most of the people who attacked Riva have not lost their homes. If I believed that our city government was responsible for the loss of my home, don't think that I would be here defending that government. Based on post-fire reports, it is clear that the city of Malibu is not responsible for the loss of my home or those of my friends and neighbors. Demonizing city officials who have worked tirelessly to help us all rebuild and heal is destructive to our community. We live in paradise. It is time for those who wallow in negativity to stifle it enough already. Have a great holiday to all of you who help make our city what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Clark, followed by Lynn Norton, followed by Scott Dietrich.
You guys have a copy of the picture that I turned in? She has it there. I'm Dr. Dana Clark. I am a member, I'm here on behalf of the Corral Canyon Fire Safety Alliance. I'm also a member of arson watch with the Sheriff's Department, and I'm a 35-year Malibu resident. I brought a picture of the only way in and out of Corral Canyon currently, and I'd like you to look at it. The black mustard, when it was pretty, and then it died. And within 10 feet of the road right now, it's upwards of 20 to 25 feet, if you go 15 to 20 feet off the road on Corral. So, that picture is right after the Hairpin Turn below El Nido in the city of Malibu. Okay? So, when we're talking about evacuation and preparedness, there's no way you can look at that picture and live up there and not every day drive by and understand that we're just sitting there. We're sitting ducks during evacuation. If the fire would go through there, we know that the fuel load in a lot of canyons is lower, but it is not in ours. And it's on a steep slope below the road and a steep slope above the road. One of our retired firemen in our canyon said that the black mustard has that potential without wind of throwing flames 20 to 30 feet in the air. Okay? So, since it's below the Hairpin Turn, people would come around that turn from El Nido and not be able to turn around. Okay? So, someone's going to die there if this isn't taken care of. DWP owns the land. We have made dozens of calls to them, and lo and behold, they're behind on their brush clearance. We were all supposed to have ours done on June 1st. That's what the sign says. Okay? We've had a lot of calls into the city. I can just tell you, some of my neighbors have said the city's done what's required, which is, I guess, 10 feet off the road. But in this case, there, you've got to look at it and see, this is crazy, that after three red flags, that that situation exists for about a half a mile before El Nido in the city of Malibu. We have the ability to get it fixed immediately and to have it cleared. It should be cleared not a little, it should be cleared excessively. DWP used to blade that land. I know they can't do that anymore, but they could at least cut it down. Okay? So, I'm urging you, for the 600 residents in Corral Canyon, the 200 homes that are represented, to put this on our list, to have something done immediately before the next red flag comes. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lynn Norton, followed by Scott Dietrich, followed by Norm Haney.
I'm just here to talk again about the short-term rental things. I'm just sort of marking time on that issue. And four weeks ago, you voted to do two things related to short-term rentals. One was to initiate an ordinance that would be similar to the Santa Monica Home Sharing Ordinance, and the other was to do an interim measure, which was to implement a previously drafted ordinance so that you could have something in the short term that was more enforceable, right? And so, what I'm actually most interested in is the Home Sharing Ordinance. And what I wanted to say, that I forgot to say before, is that the two things, they're really not dependent on each other, right? They can go forward at the same time. We don't have to finish the short-term one before we work on the long-term one. And then, after I spoke, I talked to both Bonnie and Riva, and Riva told me that actually the Home Sharing Ordinance was being worked on in conjunction with the city attorney's office, which I was very happy to hear. And so, what I wanted to ask is if there's any timeframe that we know of, when we expect to see a draft? And since it's been four weeks, if it's going to be another two weeks or four weeks, if it's going to be longer than that, if you could put more resources on it or, you know, direct more resources on that? And I'm specifically hoping Christie's working on it, because I know that she'll be the best one to actually defend it and to, you know, sell it to the coastal. That would be a hard job. And then, another thing I just wanted to say is just that it's really important that what gets drafted really matches what you guys voted on. And I don't mean to suggest that anybody's not good at that, because I think they are good at that, but in my, just in my professional background, as a software developer, we have a word called rework. And rework is when you've written a beautiful piece of software and you show it to the client and it's not what they wanted. So, it's all about communication and making sure that, you know, you have your specs right up front. And so, I just wanted to say this sentence again that Trevor said when Skylar first started the process of talking about it, which is, is it your intention to take the Santa Monica-style ordinance and integrate into that some elements from the staff report? And that's what the consensual agreement was, and I don't think that changed at all. And I'm just, because by matching the Santa Monica ordinance, that's what we think is going to give us the best, you know, legal position. So, what I'm interested in is mostly the timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Dietrich, followed by Norm Haney, followed by Ryan Embry.
Thank you, Mayor Farrar and council. First of all, I hope that the December 9th meeting will finally ban this road detentive side once and for all. That it's just dragged on so long. We've got to get rid of this stuff. We know what's happening, and there's no excuse. But secondly, and why I came tonight, is our neighborhood HOA has been trying to underground for four and a half years. We put up a couple hundred thousand dollars of our own money. It's at risk. Edison takes 40% commission for administrating the whole thing. Thank you, Edison. And they've delayed us in spite of art and Rob pushing. It's, that's silly. But even worse, once Edison tells us how much this is going to be, you've got a number of other entities that rent space on those utility poles, those ugly utility poles, that always cause fires. Actually, we had four fires in one year caused by Edison. Fortunately, none during a Santa Ana. So, they got put out very quickly by our fire department. But everybody else that rents space, who doesn't want to underground, then can just tell us how much they want to participate in this, and we have to do whatever they say, and this is ridiculous. I'm urging the council, if we can do it, to say, okay, they can charge whatever they want, but they can only charge their own customers. So, if you've got spectrum cable, they shouldn't be able to charge people who don't use spectrum cable. Let them charge their own customers, because now they're limited. Because if they ask too much of you for your cable, you'll go to Dish or somebody else, Fios. And it's a really good way to put limitations on people who really do not want to underground. So, I'm hoping we can look at that and see if we can come up with a solution, because I know of one community on Point Doom a number of years ago, they had the cash, they were going to underground, but when these other entities, the cable companies, came up, they just gave them a ridiculous amount, and it ended it right there. So, if we want it underground, we've got to do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Norm Haney, followed by Ryan Embry.
Good evening, Mayor Farrar and fellow council members. I filed an application for a hotel approximately three years ago, and it's taken me up until about two months ago to meet all of the requirements to have the application complete. Most of the problem was associated with the water department. District 29 had failed to maintain a check valve at the corner of Topanga and PCH. And they said that in order for us to approve the flow and the pressure at the two fire hydrants in front of your building, notwithstanding the fact that the flow and the pressure was already there, they said you have to fix the check valve that fell apart because we didn't bother to maintain it. Oh, and by the way, it's 10 feet down underneath the northbound lane of Topanga. Well, it took me a long time to get that finally resolved, roughly eight months, and the fire department wouldn't approve the project until that was done, because they need approval from the water department. And that's not their fault. Of course, of course, they need approval that the flow and the pressure is there. But that's been done. I believe everything that's necessary for this project to move forward, at least to have a staff recommendation come before you, has been completed. I wanted to mention also that hotels and motels are different than any other commercial use, or for that matter, any other type of project that's approved in the city of Malibu. And the reason for that is the transient occupancy tax. It basically is a fee that you pay based upon the amount of gross income that you receive. It's interesting, if you do the math, you find out that that represents somewhere between 25 and 30% of the net income. So, you're really my partner if this ever gets approved. To a substantial, to a substantial degree. Anyway, lastly, but not least, the staff works incredibly hard. I have absolutely no criticism of the staff and the way that they have reviewed this project at all. I just hope that it can be brought before you soon. The estimate is that it will provide in excess of $1 million to the city every year that it's in operation. So, I'll let that be. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker for 2A is Ryan Embry.
I believe everything that's necessary for this project to move forward, at least to have a staff recommendation come before you, has been completed. I wanted to mention also that hotels and motels are different than any other commercial use, or for that matter, any other type of project that's approved in the city of Malibu. And the reason for that is the transient occupancy tax. It basically is a fee that you pay based upon the amount of gross income that you receive. It's interesting, if you do the math, you find out that that represents somewhere between 25 and 30% of the net income. So you're really my partner if this ever gets approved. To a substantial, to a substantial degree. Anyway, lastly, but not least, the staff works incredibly hard. I have absolutely no criticism of the staff and the way that they have reviewed this project at all. I just hope that it can be brought before you soon. The estimate is that it will provide in excess of a million dollars to the city every year that it's in operation. So I'll let that be. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker for 2A is Ryan Embry.
I wanted to mention that the city has a franchise agreement with Charter Spectrum, and your city council meetings have not been shown on the local cable channel for like 10 years. I don't know, what's the problem? Because the cost shouldn't be the issue. It was like, they were extorting, well, they were asking for $900 originally, for some reason, and it may have increased with inflation since then. But there are alternate ways that the city can get a live stream out. In fact, it does so, I think, right now is live streaming on YouTube. So if the city can get a signal over to Spectrum's distribution point, they should be showing City Channel on their system. I'm not sure why the city's department that handles this does not want to put the city information out so the public can see it, but it should be a priority of the council and you can direct that to happen. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Next, we will have a city manager update.
Good evening. I wanted to start by congratulating Suzanne Good. I've worked with her for almost 25 years, and she's just been wonderful, so I really appreciate everything she has done for Malibu and for the state park system. On Tuesday, December 3rd, we have a special council meeting that starts at 5:00. That's to discuss short-term rentals, so I just want to make sure that everybody has that information. We will be closed at City Hall here this Thursday and Friday in recognition of the Thanksgiving holiday. And on December 9th, our council meeting, the agenda item, will be on rodenticides, so I just wanted to make sure everybody had that information. And Mr. Clark, regarding your issues at Corral, I know you've brought them to our staff's attention and our public safety department, and we're doing everything we can to try and get the brush clearance done. So thank you for mentioning that. And that's all I have, unless you have questions, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will have our city council subcommittee reports. Who would like to go first? Jefferson?
Thank you. Attended one meeting this week, or last week, with Mikey on sustainability and behavioral characteristics of us, all of us humans, 8 billion of us on the planet. Looking forward to the research that comes forward. It was a planet day, and very wise speakers. It was at Point Doom Elementary. I forgot their name, but, what's the name? Sea Lions? Okay. So it was a great meeting, and a lot was learned, and I look forward to the next one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mikey?
First of all, I'm just hoping the young man's okay over there. He's just asleep and not, there's no medical condition? Okay, just making sure. Just kidding. Sorry, don't mean to pick on you, just teasing. Anyhow, I'm going to make this quick. I've gotten feedback since the last meeting that us talking up here for a long time is boring as heck, so I'm going to make it really quick. Yes, Jefferson and I were at the sustainability, climate change meeting at Point Doom. It was definitely educational, learned a lot. Also, on the 14th, the mayor and I met with Jim Braden, our new...
Sergeant?
Sergeant, thank you.
At Lost Hills?
At Lost Hills, and we had a good talk about going forward and making sure things run smoothly here, including PCH, obviously, the step program, including beach teams, including pretty much everything. And that was a good meeting, to get to know him a little better, and he's going to come, introduce himself, I think, at the next meeting. He can be here. So that'll be good. On the 16th, I attended a little march in support of banning pesticides and rodenticides that was had. We went from Legacy Park over towards the Cronky Center, I mean, where Ralph's is. And that was some great posters. It was really good, and I really enjoyed it. On the 18th, I was at Pepperdine for a land use panel with the mayors of our nearby city and an assembly person, too. And that was excellent, but I'm going quick, so I'm not going to dally on stuff. On the 20th, I was at the Chambers Women's Leadership Awards at Duke's. That was absolutely fantastic, incredible speeches, incredible people were recognized, really well-done event, a real highlight. It was very inspiring, some amazing, amazing humans in this town. And on Saturday, I was here for the rebuilding town hall we had, and the amazing Yolanda Bundy did an incredible job. I think multiple rounds of applause. And Yolanda also went over some code changes coming up, which is important in the new year. It's that time, I guess every three years it happens, so there will be some code changes as well. Excellent event, well-attended, excellent job. I just want to thank you again. It was really, really tremendous. And thank you to all the speakers as well. I don't have any clue about the TV channel, it's an interesting one, I don't know. Norm, I hear you on the hotel. As you know, I've been a fan of that location, where there is just nowhere else we'll ever have in Malibu that's essentially already built, with one exception, one more building, really, and actually has parking. And it's in the perfect zone. I'm not any big fan of hotels or hotels in Malibu. I'm a fan of this project from, and as you know, I've walked it with you a couple of times. I think it's a great project, and I'm sure the Coastal Commission would agree, too. And that is what I have at this point. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Skylar?
Thank you, Karen. I like the second one Riva said, and congratulate Suzanne and thank her for her service to Malibu and state parks, and I guess all of us Californians. She's done a lot for the state parks in our area. In regards to what Mr. Clark brought up about the area of Corral, Riva, have you contacted the DWP directly yet?
I personally have not, but Jerry has been in contact with both the speaker and the entity that owns the property.
Okay.
So we'll continue to work on that.
Okay. If we don't get a response from them, I think that we should send a letter from the council to them immediately to do that.
Will do. Thank you.
And I'm going to keep it to a minimum. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Skylar. Rick?
Skylar and I had an administration and finance meeting this afternoon, and we allocated a little more funds for the FEMA MAPS issue, which is, I would say, gone through phase one. We've gotten feedback from FEMA, and we're allocating the appropriate resources, and we got a good briefing on that from Public Works, so that was good. We also punted on something else, it was a little too expensive, that may come before the city council later. Thank you for addressing the Corral Canyon road issue. I was going to say the same thing, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's a little scary. We had a school separation ad hoc, ad hoc? Yeah, meeting that was very productive, as they've all been. It's a complicated issue, I'm not going to talk too much about the meeting, but we're fully engaged and we're leaving no stone unturned, and I say, as we move forward, we're getting smarter and smarter and learning a lot better information about what our options are. Getting great reviews from people on Yolanda's workshop on the weekend. I'm sorry that I was unable to attend. I really appreciate everything that you've done and everything that the entire city staff has done to try and facilitate people getting through this difficult period of rebuilding, so thank you very much. I'm hearing nothing but wonderful things. I did, I think I mentioned this last time, but I did, at the city's little get-together on Zuma Beach, I ran into Stephen Murphy, who is the guy in the house that you just showed on the little video, that's his house. He was the first one to get a permit, permit number one. And he's wasting no time in building his house, so I knew that, and I asked him, I said, Steve, what is your success? Other than, he's a former naval aviator, which is an indication of somebody who's willing to get the job done quickly. And what he said to me was, I just do what the city planning department and building safety tells me I have to do, and I get it done. I said, so what do you think is the problem with most of the other people? He said, I'm not sure. So I think the city is trying to reach out to all those people that are somewhere in the unfinished stages of their application process, et cetera, and extend the helping hand to try and figure out where they are. And for a lot of these people, maybe they're just in shock or still not sure if they're going to be somebody who sells their property or rebuilds or whatever, but I appreciate all of the efforts that the city is doing to reach out to those people during this very difficult time and try and help them through the process. And they can talk to Stephen Murphy, I'm sure he'd be happy to share his insights because it's impressive to be that far along at this stage, right after that horrible fire that he went through. And that is it. Thank you very much.
So Rick? Skylar?
Sorry, I had one more comment, and I forgot to say that our last meeting, but I just want to thank all of our staff in planning, building, and safety, and environmental health for all of your continued work. I feel a lot more support, obviously going to our residents, it's been there all the time, and I think it's really starting to resonate with the people that are going through the rebuilding process, so thank you.
Thank you. My report, a lot of things. Went to the monthly Chamber of Commerce breakfast. I had amazing, meeting with Poison Free Malibu regarding our agenda item coming up December 9th. Jefferson and I had the library subcommittee meeting, and we discussed next year's programs. And I want to thank the city and library staff for that. I think that library speaker series is a fabulous program. I hope more people take advantage of it in the future. The next one won't be until January. Yeah, Mikey and I met with Sergeant Jim Braden at Lost Hills, and actually, it was the day of the Saugus school shooting, which Lost Hills sent a big response to, so, you know, there's always something. Riva and I had a meeting at Pepperdine with President Jim Gash and Vice President Phil Phillips and several of their staff members, and talking about how the city and the university can be better neighbors, better partners. Rick and I had the school district separation ad hoc committee meeting for two hours going into a Friday night, and yes, we are working through that process as much as we can. I served on the county supervisors' Woolsey After Action Report or Task Force. The final after-action report was presented on Sunday, November 17th, and that's available to read online if anybody wants to look at it. I don't have the link in front of me, but I can find it if anybody wants it. I attended our Last Virginist Malibu COG meeting, as I'm the COG rep, and always updates there. We had updates this time from our assembly member, Richard Bloom, from our state senator, Henry Stern, from the fire department, from Metro, from the sheriff. Jim Braden was there and addressed the COG, and I think he is coming hopefully to our next council meeting to introduce himself here. I, too, attended the Chamber of Commerce Women in Leadership Awards, and it was my honor to present a lifetime legacy award to Heidi Bernard, who's the executive director of the Pepperdine Crest Associates. Also honored was one of our cultural arts commissioners, Kathy Eldon, for her philanthropic work. The Boys and Girls Club Chief Administrator, Casey Ernest, for her longstanding and deeply impactful community work. Malibu business owner, Yvonne de La Rosa Green. Lost Hills Lieutenant Jennifer Cito, and some other people who I hadn't met, but seem like amazing people. It was also my honor to introduce the final speaker of the library speaker series, environmentalist Winona Leduke. She's a Native American and an excellent speaker. I'd love to see those events better attended. I'm also the SCAG Southern California Association of Government liaison, and we had a long conference call about AB 50, which is Scott Weiner's housing bill, and I think, as most people know, there's resistance all over the state to that as it's a one-size-fits-all bill, although I give the SCAG credit for trying to work to some kind of productive conclusion on that. And the rebuilt town hall on Saturday was amazing. First of all, I want to thank Yolanda Bundy and everybody in her staff. This room was packed. I'm really glad there was a good turnout. It was a lot of information, and the video, does anybody know if the video is posted?
I'll find out and let you know as soon as I can. Thank you.
Is that the video from the meeting?
Yes, it's posted.
Okay, great. So on the city website, if anybody's interested, wants refresher course, who was here or did not get to see it, please look on the city website for the rebuild town hall meeting. And I, too, want to thank Dana Clark for this dramatic photo. I've driven up and down Corral Canyon many times. That looks very scary. And yeah, any leverage that we can get with the water department, this is their responsibility, and this year of all years, there's no excuse, in my opinion, to let it get to that point, especially after the rain we had and the growth. And I just want to say, I have had discussions with neighbors, with friends, with acquaintances for quite some time now, and many people are coming to me with the same conclusion. There is a vocal minority here that is consistently negative, engaged in conspiracy theory, sometimes outright fabrication, just like we're seeing on the national level and global. This vocal minority has created a culture of intimidation and fear of retribution, particularly online. I've been contacted by people unsolicited telling me as much, and that they fear voicing their opinions publicly for fear of attack. I'm very sorry to see this phenomenon in our city, and I and others who fear saying so publicly cannot pretend that it does not exist. It's common to see a gathering of people who are protesting or dissatisfied, whether it's fact-based or not. It's much more unusual to see people show up who are happy or grateful about something coming forward to say so. Thank you.
Karen, could I take a moment, please, and address two of the speakers very quickly?
Please.
Thank you, Karen. So Lynn, on the STRs, you're experiencing, just like we are here at the city, how these platforms are readily available to commit themselves to the revenue chain that they're accustomed to, and in doing so, we have to play catch-up. And quite often, we're learning as we're trying to negotiate. So be patient with us, we are on it and we're doing our best. And Scott, on the undergrounding, we've talked about it before. What you're saying about the other vendors on the lines is very true. It just takes one of them to say no, and you're shot. And I know you've been after this for years in your community, and I appreciate that, and stick with it, don't give up. It's just like being here at council, there's things that frustrate you and there's things that don't. Things you feel good about and things you don't, and that's how it is, and we move on. And Norm, with the hotel? I know you've been at it three years. I got that flyer that you dropped off, I appreciate that very much, looks like a terrific project, but we'll see that in the future. I look forward to the TOT. If those numbers are correct, big birthday cake when it opens. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. Okay, moving on. On the consent calendar, I see speaker slips.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent calendar pulling items 3A2 and 3B2? Unless there's anything else that needs to be pulled from anyone?
Council members, any other consent items pulled?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Could we please have a staff report on item 3A2?
Mayor, we don't have a staff report prepared for the second reading of this ordinance, so if you'd like us to answer any specific questions, we can certainly do that.
Okay, we have a speaker slip from Stephen Hurd. Okay, we have a speaker slip from Stephen Hurd.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff and directors. Thank you for your time, your patience, and actions in working with this matter. I really appreciate you listening to me and my situation and taking the unique circumstances from the total loss of the Woolsey Fire into consideration. I was just teaching kids karate class for Joey Escobar about an hour and a half ago, and was speaking to the students, our next generation of Malibu, about the ripple effect. The stone we cast into the pond today will affect me, my son, wife, parents, friends. These ripples will continue unto hundreds of people that I come in contact with weekly and make citizens' lives of Malibu better and happier during a challenging time for our city as we continue to recover and move forward. I just really want to say thank you so much, and I truly appreciate it, and I will not forget your willingness to help. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Do they make a motion to approve item 3A2?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item from the consent calendar that's been polled is 3B2, and the speaker is, oh, do we have a staff report? Excuse me.
No, Mayor, we don't. This is the warrant register, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, excuse me. Okay.
A question about the warrant register is, does the city treasurer review the warrants either every time or on a sporadic basis? Because there's no signature even reviewing it, not approving it, but reviewing it. And also, is the warrant register approval after the fact? Because a lot of these checks are dated November 7th. I'm just wanting to check and see if that's proper protocol. There's two items I wanted to speak to. I chose to do it here and not under public comment. And it has to do, one, with the cost sharing, the city's involuntary agreement memorandum of understanding with the state of California. It kind of came about over 15 years, and it's morphed into a big amount of money. And it originated in the 90s with the request that the city pay a portion of the electrical usage for the traffic signals that were on Pacific Coast Highway, like Big Rock, Cross Creek Road, and Webb Way. And remember Walt Keller being very specific that the city should not entertain in paying any more than the number of legs of a city street that were contributing to the intersection electrical usage. And I understand the mathematics of that. I also kind of stepped back and kind of wondered why we'd be paying it at all. They were there before the city even incorporated. It's a state highway. The agreement was ultimately entered into, and it was because we were going to get cooperation from Caltrans on a lot of things that we needed to have done to those signals, like their timing fixed so we could get out of town at regular weekday and so forth. And this came out because we had a public safety, I'm sorry, we called it a transportation committee at the time. We had a public safety committee at the time and so forth. That agreement has morphed into newer versions that have expanded those things that the city pays for, and that includes repairs to traffic signals, which can be considerable. And the last agreement, I think Claudio Sanchez had it, and I pulled the item and spoke to it and said, this now includes the word replacements, which are very expensive. And considering that we're having deficient signals now that don't have battery backup or electric generators to make them operable during the known threats and conditions that we have and are faced with, I think you should relook at that MOU to see if it's even appropriate that we'd be contributing. The amount this time, this month, was $10,900 for traffic signal maintenance.
Okay, with the reordering of the agenda, our next item is...
Did you want to have discussion and approval or a vote on that item?
Sorry. Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me, now. With the reordering of the agenda, we're moving to item 7A, council appointment to the Public Safety Commission. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor Farrar. I appreciate that. This unfortunate event has been brought about by the untimely and tragic death of Andy Cohen, who was my previous Public Safety Commissioner, and he was a fine individual who really did an amazing amount of things in a short period of time, and kind of came into his position like a bat out of hell, for want of a better expression. He did a lot of things, and those are big shoes to fill. And I don't want to do this without first mentioning how wonderful Andy was, and that I still feel, I want to send my gratitude to his family for allowing him to, for his time of service to Malibu, and express my condolences once again for the tragic loss of their wonderful father and companion, and the community misses him deeply. Fortunately for me and for Malibu, I had several people approach me about wanting to fill that position. And I made my choice, and my choice to appoint, my appointment for a Public Safety Commissioner is Dane Scopehammer, who is here in the audience, and I'm going to give him an opportunity to come to the, why don't you come on up here, and I'm going to give you a chance to speak. And while you're sauntering up, I want to talk a little bit about you and why I chose you over the other candidates, a couple of them who had, I would say, maybe greater depth of life experience. But the one thing that I like about Dane is that he is a man of integrity, who comes from a rock-solid Malibu family. And I think it's important for people who've kind of lived here and grown up in that Malibu, gone to the schools, and lived the life here to understand really what the public safety challenges are. And one of the gentlemen who approached me about this had some good experience, but he'd only been here for a little while. And I think that in this position, it's important to have a certain regional experience, and growing up is important. Dane is a veteran of our local Malibu schools. He's a UCLA graduate. He actually played football on UCLA. He's been a talented chef for a number of LA, top LA restaurants. He was actually the former head chef for Malibu, the iconic Malibu Farms Restaurant. During the Woolsey Fire, he took action with a number of impromptu volunteers who may not have planned as much as they had never foreseen the role that they would play in this largest disaster, largest brush fire in LA County's history. And he worked with his neighbors and took care of his community, and was, he took his, actually used his chef talents and put them to work feeding a bunch of people in Point Dume and other places, and was instrumental in distributing supplies for a chaotic situation, to be honest with you. A chaotic situation where not only the municipal government and the county government and the responders couldn't get in to fill all the gaps, and there are many noteworthy actions taken by citizens who filled in and did the things that were necessary to take care of their neighbors. And I think Dane's perspective during that event showed him that the role of the citizens is very important, and also probably exposed some of the deficiencies in the public agencies responding, as well as the city of Malibu, let's be honest, and how that big event can be improved upon. And he approached me, and he expressed an interest in this, and I look at Dane, and I say, that's the future of Malibu. We're kind of, at least me, I'm on the more the exhaust port of Malibu. And when I see a younger person who's willing to give up of his time, which he may regret, but that's okay, you've made the first step forward, and now you're here. I really appreciate that. And the reason why Malibu is a good community is because we have great citizens to step forward and do things, give of their time, not only for these formal things like city government, et cetera, but also take action in an emergency. And I appreciate not only the actions that you took during the fire, but your willingness to give your free time and to be a part of the solutions as we move forward. So I really look forward to you serving the city of Malibu, and I want you to use your creative ideas and bring them to the table, and we want to hear them, and there's, we're all dedicated to leaving no stone unturned and making Malibu a better place, and you're going to be a key part of that, and I appreciate that. And so I want to give you the opportunity to say a few words to everybody, but I also wanted to thank you for being willing to step forward and being part of the solution.
Great. Thanks for having me. I'm excited to be here. I didn't really have a lot prepared, but this is a big step for me. It's really cool to be acknowledged by the city of Malibu, by Mr. Moll in particular. He's been a neighbor of mine my entire life, and it's just, it's really nice to be able to be here and to be able to give back to a city that's given me, I feel like, so much. You know, my personality is almost ingrained, I feel like, with the city that I grew up in, and I'm very proud to be able to take a step to just do something for the, for the community, for everybody that's been here and been part of my upbringing. And yeah, I don't have a lot prepared. I didn't, I didn't expect to be here. But so thank you very much for bringing me into the, into the formal government of Malibu. And yeah, I'm excited to get to work and to do the best I can.
Thank you very much, Dane. Appreciate you coming down here, and don't hesitate to let us know what your ideas are, and we'll make sure that you get the full support of the council on everything that the Public Safety Commission brings forward. Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Next generation moving up. Okay, our next item, oh, 4A.
Do we need to make a motion to continue this?
Yeah, 4A has been continued to a date uncertain. So, moving on. 4B, zoning text amendment. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Farrar. Just briefly, this item is a zoning text amendment that will allow a temporary use permit to be issued for off-site farmer's market parking. Right now, the zoning code only allows one farmer's market in the city. That site is, as you know, is on the county's property, where in the civic center where the new Santa Monica College is under construction. And for this amendment, only the municipal code would be amended, so there's no certification required from the Coastal Commission. The chapter on temporary uses, which is chapter 17.48, would be amended to allow, to add a new use to the list of things that can be allowed with a temporary use permit. The reason for this code change is because this is a community-serving use with limited options for parking that would replace what will be displaced by the college construction. When staff originally presented this amendment to the Planning Commission, it did not include a distance requirement for the parking location or a sunset provision. We have included it in the staff recommendation tonight, as the Planning Commission recommended, but if the council wanted to not include those, it would also work just as well. Once adopted, the farmer's market would apply for a temporary use permit, for temporary surface parking to be located within 350 feet of the market. The city council, as you will recall, previously authorized the city manager to allow the farmer's market to use the Ioki property for temporary parking. That's all I have in terms of comments. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Why the distance? Why was that, why was that added? What was the intent?
I think the Planning Commission was just trying to keep it in close proximity to where the market is located.
Where does 350 feet get you to?
The Ioki property and, you know, like Legacy Park and the La Paz property. Those would probably be the closest things within 350 feet.
I guess.
Council members, questions? Oh, excuse me, we have one public comment. I apologize. Scott Dietrich.
I made a mistake. It was supposed to be 2B, Commission, not 4. And if I could just briefly, I'll just take a minute. We met with Caltrans, trying to put the, they want to put the crosswalk by Malibu Seafood. We've been, just everybody in the city's been trying to do the underpass right by the Sarawand Trail, and Caltrans has really been fighting us. Rob DeBeau did a fantastic job going along with, you know, not just always complaining. He really pushed them, and we got a public meeting, and everybody said, yes, do the underpass. And finally, we got the Caltrans, they honored, I didn't think they would, but they got the bulldozers out, and they took the sand away, and voila, there's an underpass that you can cross safely right now until we can figure something permanent out. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So, back to the zoning text amendment. Council members?
Make a motion to pass, as agendaised?
I will second that.
So, Madam Mayor, the motion is to introduce on first reading an ordinance of the city of Malibu amending the Malibu Municipal Code Title 17 to amend Chapter 17.68 temporary use permits to address temporary use permits for temporary off-site parking for the farmer's market and determining zoning text amendment 19-65 to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, thank you, Christie.
What she said.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Right. Item 4C, local coastal program amendment. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. As the council is aware, the city is proposing a capital improvements project on Westwood Beach Road to improve public parking and access amenities in the area. This is part of the CIP plan. Public Works is currently in the design phase for this project. Since the project will require a coastal development permit to be processed, and it's in the appealable zone, staff reviewed the project with the Coastal Commission to see what feedback they had. Some of the improvements will, we expected that they would be very excited about it, and they are. However, they did raise one issue. Some of the improvements will encroach seaward into the sandy beach area a little bit, 10 feet, maybe 10 or 12 feet. Coastal staff pointed out that there's a policy in the land use plan of the local coastal program that states that only lifeguard stations, concessions, trash recycling receptacles, and physically challenged access improvements can encroach on the sandy beach. The city's improvements include all types of access, not just physically challenged access. We were hoping that the Coastal Commission staff would interpret that broadly enough that we didn't have to do an LCP amendment, but they didn't agree with that approach. So we worked with them on amendment language. What we're proposing, let's see, this, what's on the screen, this is just for reference in case there's any, you wanted to discuss it. This is what's currently in the land use plan in this particular policy. And then what we worked on with the Coastal Commission was just to change, add the word "public" and remove the words "physically challenged," and basically leave the rest of the language as it is. That's the language that we presented to the Planning Commission. When we presented it to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission expressed great concern about broadening this language, that it could open up the door to more extensive public access projects by state agencies. The commission, you know, particularly about MRCA or the Coastal Commission, and whether they might propose new projects on the beach, two of our planning commissioners submitted correspondence about this issue. To try to avoid this problem, the Planning Commission added some additional language to the amendment. It's shown here in orange. They wanted to narrow the scope of the amendments to public access improvements located on Westwood Beach Road. Westward Beach Road. We were concerned that the Coastal Commission might object to this language, and we, after the commission adopted their resolution, we did check with the Coastal Commission staff, and they do feel that this language is too limiting and would result in unintended consequences, that it would be interpreted narrowly so that only public access improvements could occur on Westward Beach Road in the context of affecting sandy beach areas. That's all that this is talking about. Coastal Commission prefers the original language. So at this point, in order to avoid a problem with when we begin processing the coastal development permit for this project, we recommend going with the original language as agreed by city staff and the Coastal Commission staff for certification in the LCP. And then, but the other options that the council has would be to use the planning commission's language, or even a third option would be to adopt no amendment and leave the language as it is. In that scenario, we would be hoping that the Coastal Commission would not appeal the CDP if we approved it in conflict with the existing policy language, and so we don't have any guarantee about that.
Madam Mayor, can I just confirm some... Sorry. Can I confirm something with the director? This is a proposed amendment to the land use policy.
Right.
And whenever somebody wants to do development within Malibu, they have to get a coastal development permit.
Right.
And we decide whether or not they can get the permit based on whether they're consistent with the policies. So it doesn't matter how broad the policy is. It doesn't allow any development because you still have to get a coastal development permit. When the language is very narrow, it precludes even asking for a permit, but by broadening the language, we aren't... It doesn't give MRCA, for example, the opportunity to do anything now that it couldn't do before, right?
That's correct.
It doesn't change that because they still absolutely have to get a coastal development permit, and there are many more policies that an application has to be consistent with than just this one.
That's right.
Just to make sure I understood.
Okay. Does that conclude your...
That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. We have one speaker slip. John Maza. Council comments?
Make a motion to approve this, to adopt resolution 19-49.
I'll just... Can I make a couple of quick comments on it? I did read the letter. It was also endorsed by Steve Euring as a follow-up, and the concerns I read about seem to have some merit. I'm just not a land use expert, so I'll have to rely on the city attorney's interpretation of the language of the draft, as well as the staff's. But I did read the letter. It raised some interesting questions, though, but if you say it's good to go, I'm going to go roll with you.
I'll ask a quick question. So it broadens the policy, but doesn't that allow additional applications for a CDP because the policy is broader?
Yes, but you still have to get a CDP, and there are many other policies. This is... And honestly, we would, we were reading it more broadly anyways. This change makes the policy say what we always believed it said. It's coastal that was reading it narrowly to just be access for, you know, the disabled.
So you're saying this doesn't change how we would have previously, and then if we pass it going forward, have processed this similar type of CDP?
That's correct. Just add one last little thing and then make your motion, which is that, you know, we're not generous with CDPs. We're very careful, and the planning commission is the ones who get to make the initial decision. So we're not opening any pandarus boxes.
Okay. Anyone else?
I thought this fly-by-night organization was just going to start passing them out. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we need to read the motion again? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. We adjourned at 7:52 PM.
Some sort of world record.